So I'll call to order this Planning Commission meeting on Tuesday, February the 19th, 7:00 PM. And can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Ford, Commissioner O'Nines.
Here.
Chair Hancock, Vice Chair Whipple.
Here.
Commissioner Moore.
Okay, so did it, was my name come up there? It did, okay. I hear. I didn't hear that bit. So if we could go on to the approval of minutes. And the first Planning Commission regular meeting, January 7th. And I guess a roll call, or all say aye. Everybody approve?
Aye.
Aye. Planning Commission's special joint meeting, January 22nd, which was a big meeting. Do we just approve it, or has anybody got any comments on it? It was a joint meeting with the city council. It looked basically in order.
Sure, I'll move to approve those minutes.
Second, can we have a roll call on that?
Aye.
Aye, aye, three ayes. All present. So are there any changes to the agenda? No changes, gentlemen. So for oral and written communications, the public is asked to please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Please limit your comments to items not already agenditized for discussion. So is there anybody who would like to make a comment, not on the record? Seeing none, I'll move on to matters at hand. So this is the consideration of a use permit for a school specialized education training, Music To My Ears, to be located at 170 East Catati Avenue. Can we have staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, my name's John Paul Harris. I'm a senior planner with the city of Catati. And tonight, we're talking about a school that already exists within the city limits. It's Music To My Ears. They currently operate out at the Apple Valley Plaza on Gravenstein Highway, and one of the detached buildings next to the subway, if you're all familiar with it. So they're operating in that retail center there. This would allow them to both relocate to a different location and building at 170 East Catati. That also allows an expansion of their business. That building previously functioned as an office space, so it's divided up into offices. They're proposing a significant remodel. And I also should state, it's about two-story building. It's 4,924 square feet. Their remodel would create two reception areas, nine separate classrooms, kind of a reception, that's not the word I want to use, a rehearsal area, and then an upstairs recital hall for larger events. Included with exterior changes that they propose would be restriping the parking lot to both pull the cars away from the building, allow for pedestrian movement along the building, where currently the cars are literally pulling right up to the, well, I think it's CMU there. But, as well as it allows them to increase the number to 20, 20 spaces. So we'll get a little more parking out of that facility then. As well, they are, because they're creating a recital hall upstairs, which is large enough to be considered an assembly occupancy, they are required to make certain structural changes to the building, not structural, certain changes. One of them will be the installation of fire sprinklers. The other is to install that second-story exit. And that exit will be served with a handicap-accessible chair, or ramp, actually, it's a platform. And then they also propose to pretty much soundproof the entire building with soundproof windows, double walls, and more solid-core doors. They propose to operate between 10, generally between 10:00 AM and 8:00 PM, and we expect, and they hope, approximately 200 students per week. So it's about 40 per day. Most of their activity is Monday through Friday, but they're not, we're not proposing to limit their activity only to Mondays, Fridays, so Saturday and Sunday would be open as well. The site itself is located on, like I said, on 170 East Catati. That's within the commercial East Catati corridor, so it's zoned appropriately. It carries a general commercial land use designation, so the general plan is consistent, it is consistent with the general plan. Surrounding development is immediately to the south, and this is probably the most sensitive use, is our apartments along Marshway, and also across Marshway, and onto the southwest of the property. There are multifamily homes. Directly across East Catati Avenue is the church there, the New Hope Church. And then the Laguna de Santa Rosa runs just to the east of the property. And on the other side of that is, is not very, it's a residential property, but it's really not being used for much of anything right now. It's been kind of in that condition for a while. Couple things that may be of interest to the commission is, we did look at the noise, and because of all the improvements that are proposed to be installed in the building, we're not concerned really that it's going to generate any kind of noise impact. However, we are asking them to operate with the windows and doors closed during their larger events, and to monitor noise, same as we have asked all applicants that come before us that might have any kind of noise generating activity, to monitor. And we provide the level that we want them to look for. In this case, it's 65 dBA at those residential property lines, any point along that residential property line. With respect to parking, we, you know, there's no, our code does not give us specific parking minimum for this type of school. We looked at the range of different schools, studios, meeting facilities, and that they're described in your board, excuse me, commission packet. But it went from a low of nine to a high of 41, so there's quite a range in there. We felt the low of nine was probably not accurate. It was probably, would be closer than max capacity there of 20, as well as even maybe needing a few on-street spaces along East Catati Avenue. So we're figuring about 20, 24 is probably about what we would expect. Now, they do propose to have occasional events, which would fill the recital hall upstairs. Those could see 50 to 80 people, which would almost double the parking demand for that facility. We did talk to the applicants and ask that they approach the church across the street to get into some sort of park, you know, parking sharing agreement. And they did do that, they did approach them, they did take it to their board, which pretty much had no interest in participating in any kind of shared parking agreement.
Had no interest, you said?
That's right. That's how it was described to us by the applicants when, you know, afterwards, that they didn't want to participate, and didn't really even want to ask questions of them. So they just weren't interested. So and then when we, after that had happened, we looked around to see what is the general parking availability, and found that there is quite a bit of on-street parking along East Catati. If you go down Marshway, over onto McKinnis Court, not on Marshway, there's no parking there, but on McKinnis Circle, excuse me, there's parking, as well as down Charles and La Plaza, going into that downtown area. So that was the other issue that I wanted to mention, and I think, I think with that, I'm, you know, just available for any questions, the applicants are here, so if you have any questions of the applicants, they're available. Thank you.
Any, any questions from the commission?
I had a question. Were the, were the neighbors notified of the potential use that's, could be there? Was there any kind of discussion with neighbors or notification?
Yeah, with any use permit, there's a, there's a notification that goes out to every property owner within 500 feet of the, of the proposed use, as well as it was posted in the community voice, that we would be holding this hearing today. I received no comments orally or written about, on the application.
Okay, thank you.
Just since this is quite a dramatic change of use, the 80 people upstairs, the, that would be guaranteed by the architectural firm that it can take that, structural firm, or that the, the building can structurally take that number of people?
Yeah. At the rate, currently, the plans that are submitted, were submitted by a structural engineer, so they are looking at that as well. It's going through our normal design review process, I mean, excuse me, building, it will go through the whole building permit process. So I'm assuming that it can take that? Or, I should say, I'm assuming we're going to make sure that it can take that, as it goes, as we, they submit for their TIs, yeah.
Okay, good. And then, I mean, on parking, I would think on both sides of East Catati Avenue, there must be at least 10 spaces that are very close.
At least, yeah.
At least, so it's, it's a good usage, I mean, for that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, if there's no further questions, I'll open it up to the public, and if the applicant wants to say anything, you're very welcome to at this stage. Come and introduce yourselves, sounds like a really great project, we really appreciate it.
Hello. I'm Evan Bowers, this is my wife, Krista Durand. So we're the new owners of Music To My Ears, as of this year. And, yeah, we're super excited about the new facility, having a local place, or in-house space to do our recitals and things like that. Right now, we just have a very small lobby space to do these things, and we often have to go to other locations to do it, which we probably will still do for really large, like we're doing Les Mis at the Phoenix this weekend, so come see that. So those, those kinds of events will probably, you know, that's like 200 people, so that's not going to be at our facility here, but...
But a lot of the, the small kids shows and the teacher recitals, which right now, we often are renting churches for around the county, could actually be in-house, which would also get more participation, we believe, as well, because parents will know where to come already, and they can just go to the same place they already go for lessons to come see that.
Yeah, and it'll actually, renting a facility is often very expensive, so sometimes we just have a few shows because that's all you can afford with our own space. We could probably have, you know, several weekends of the same show, rather than, you know, the limited showing.
And the educational reason that we're excited about that is, right now, often our kids are only getting to do one or two shows, so they rehearse for weeks or months, and they do it once or twice because of cost. And then being able to do it six times lets them, like, deepen into everything they're doing and practice that performance for other people, so they can get experience doing that.
Yeah, and then we have a new program for musical theater, aspiring musical theater performers, to kind of help them navigate what it takes to be a real musical theater performer, you know, both, both how to audition for things, but also just financially, how do you pay to become, you know, because for a while, you're going to have to do other jobs to get there. So, so it's kind of the realistic aspects of doing that. So this will give us an extra space where that can kind of happen, do, like, how to use your microphone properly, you know, those kind of things, and have, maybe have a space where you get used to performing, right? Because that's really the only way to get over that feeling, is to have that space. So anyway, that's why we, one of the reasons we want to have that easily, readily accessible space for them to do that.
And then the other thing that we were excited about with the new location is that right now, since we're across the freeway, you could walk or bike, but it's not super safe for kids to do that alone, and so they mostly have to get driven. But in the new location, we'll be in a more residential neighborhood, and we're right by that creek path, so we're hoping that it opens up access to kids to come participate in music, whose parents maybe work, and, but they could walk from their house to their lesson or their music class. And then also that, when parents drop off their kids, we're closer to downtown and to the Oliver Shopping Center, so that parents have more time to do errands or grocery shop, or even, like, walk that creek path and get some exercise while their kids are, you know, in the school for only an hour, and they can use a little bit more productive use of their time.
Yeah. That reminds me, then, so the other, one of our classrooms is going to be a little bit larger than the others, than we typically had space for, so we're hoping to be able to start offering, like, group piano, group guitar, drums, those kinds of things. Maybe some students, private lessons are great, but not everyone can afford a private lesson. So this would open up that opportunity to some members of the community that might not otherwise be able to do that, and allow those that are taking privates, they get a little extra instruction each week, rather than just the private lessons.
Any questions?
I'd like to ask you a question I ask everyone. On Exhibit A, we have a page and a half of conditions. Do you find any of these conditions unreasonable or egregious in any manner?
I'm not familiar with the conditions.
That's on Exhibit A. That's the stuff you're agreeing to do if we okay this.
We've read this, but as what, oh, the hours are up, and the noise and all that stuff. All the normal stuff we know about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly, I think, a lot of, a lot of all of them, but some of these we've proposed ourselves, that, to help, you know, with sound issues and things like that.
Well, if you've got a squeal, now's the chance to do it.
No, I think, all those things fine. The biggest problems for us is getting the sprinkler system in there, and that's been the most challenging.
Well, thank you very much, very, very enlightening, yes?
All right. Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else who would like to make public comment? Seeing nobody, I will close public comment and bring it back to the Planning Commission. Any, any thoughts, or?
We've dealt with this company business before, when we approved them over in the Gravenstein area. They've been very responsible, as I understand. They're moving into a space that's been empty for two years. I can see no disadvantages to this at all, I'm very enthusiastic for them.
I also really appreciate the chance for children to have music in the community, and, because my daughter has been taking classes for Music To My Ears with the previous owner, and performed over there in that small space, and it was small. So I think it's a great use of that building, and I'm really looking forward to all the changes that are going to be made. I think that's going to be really great for the community and great for your business.
And I too echo that, on the sort of having a new business there, particularly, I like your idea of being able to use the bike path as an access, because actually, I live not too far away from there, and that's one of the visions we've had with that bike path, is that it's just a beautiful community thing for kids to get out, and for adults to be able to walk and just really appreciate things. And then your idea of tying it in so that there aren't vehicle miles being, you know, there aren't vehicles traveling there, fits with what the city's trying to do right now, is really just make it easier. We have got a sign program that's also coming out, to get people knowing where the city is, and the bike path is very prominent on that, to direct people to where it is. And so, you know, it's very exciting, so I think this is, is very good. Can I have a resolution or a move to approve the?
Lisa likes to read those. Page 20.
Oh, that's the beginning of it, it's on, right at the front.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution for the Planning Commission of the city of Catati approving a use permit to allow a 4,920-foot, sorry, 24-square-foot school, specialized education and training, located at 170 East Catati Avenue.
In a second?
A second.
And a roll call?
Commissioner O'Nines?
Yes.
Chair Hancock?
Yes.
Vice Chair Whipple?
Yes.
Very good, well, congratulations, and I did actually go to a couple of concerts at the old location, and so some of the friends' kids had them playing there, so look forward to hearing when new concerts come up. So reports by staff?
Thank you, Chairman, I do have a few reports. First of all, the Community Development Director, the announcement for that job is out to the recruiter. It has not yet gone live, but they've been saying one or two weeks, for one or two weeks now, so I'm expecting it to go live at any time. Also, the second round of cannabis are, for cannabis permitting, the RFP went out on February 4th. So the applications are due March 11, which happens to be my birthday. But, and so we'll be looking at those additional permits. So we have more permits available than we had applicants last time, so hopefully we'll see those get used up. Also, want to report out from the city council, that the city council took action to change the design review process for the city. So rather than having the Design Review Committee, it will now be the Design Review Administration. So it's pretty much still the same process, without the public hearing that, at the Design Review Committee, but still involving design review professionals as needed, and focused on which design professionals we need at different times. Could be landscape, could be architecture, different things. On that, so the second reading will be February 26, and then it will become effective 30 days later, so in the meantime, we're not going to be doing any design review while we're in this process, going through this process change, so starting March 26, then we can start moving projects through a design review process again. And I don't see it affecting any projects anyway that we have, so it's not like anyone is being, going to be held up by, by this particular change. With respect to projects, the Catati Hotel, their submittal, their resubmittal has come in, it looks complete at this point, we'll be making that final determination in just the next couple of days. And then, and we're also pulling the SEQA document together, and that should be coming, hitting the street in the next couple of weeks. And then that will be out for 30 days for public review, and then depending on how those comments go, we'll start looking at scheduling that for, for hearings in April or May. That's our, that's our goal for the, and that will be coming to the Planning Commission for, for its decision. The assisted living project, this is a project for assisted living facility at the northwest corner of Alder Lane and Highway 116, so out past Lowe's Little Ways, where our old Reds Recovery Room used to be, if you remember that. So that, that whole building is proposed to be tore down, and that whole site redeveloped. We've been working on that project for some time, and we feel like we're probably, also had a complete submittal there, and we'll be putting the document out also real soon for its 30-day review. And at this point, we're just waiting to hear from the tribe, whether or not they want to consult on the project. They, they've been invited to, and they told us they'd be reviewing it within the next 10 days, and I would say it's probably about a week, a week or, week or less for them to get back to us. The Colvin Project at 100 Valparaiso and Catati Station, no changes from when Vicki last reported out on that. They're still working with the developers to, builders, to, to build the project. They're finishing their due diligence on that, and, and everything seems to be moving forward with it.
Well, they're doing some landscaping over there, they're cutting out.
Oh, yeah, over at 100 Valparaiso, yeah, you saw the tree removal that happened over there. Yeah, they can do some initial work, but, but right now, they won't be able to pull building permits, they could even do some grading, but until we have the final map process completed, and we expect that to be completed probably by March, mid-March, I want to say, they won't have to go to council for its, for approval of the subdivision improvement agreement and the final map.
So the, the initial has already been approved, it's been through, hasn't it?
Yeah, yeah, the, the project has been approved by the city council, that's correct, yeah.
And they'll be maintaining that building as a historic building?
That's correct.
Right.
And then another one, I don't think has been reported out, but this was a project that was approved back in 2006, at the, yeah, it's one of the, one of these ones that, you know, started up, and then the economy went bad in 2008, and, but it still has a life left in it because of various extensions that have been given to it by the, either legislature or, or the Catati decision-making bodies. But it's a six-unit subdivision at the top of Lasker Lane. If you go all the way up Lasker, it looks like it dead-ends, but actually, it kind of goes up this dirt driveway, well, that would be a continuation of Lasker Lane, and it leads up to a property that's got a single home on it now. It also fronts up next to Honor Place, so that little area will be a six-unit subdivision. It does already have an environmental document that it was approved, it has a PUD overlay on it, so the zoning is fixed on that, and it has a tentative map for, for a subdivision. So all those pieces are alive still. We're considering an extension to the map, because they've submitted for, the design review part expired a long time ago, so they've now resubmitted for the design review approval. No changes to, to the project, they're really advancing pretty much the exact same project from 2006. But there's been some changes in state law with respect to water quality treatment, and certain roadway whits for fire engine, and so we're trying to see if we can do some tweaking to the project without really materially affecting the project in any way. And so you'll see, start to see that project kind of come forward. And then, I think I'll just report out, as this committee is also the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. And so, just to let you know, I've been selected to chair the countywide Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, so I, this will be my second year doing it, just fine. We have the Wayfinding Project, thank you, everyone, for attending that meeting last week, or, excuse me, last month. It's just now, it's gone back to the consultants, and we're going to wait for the design package to come through, or the construction documents to come through. One of the questions that came up there was the use of wood. One of the wood types was either African mahogany or, or red cedar. And I did look into it, and I learned that at that meeting, too, and I was a little, you know, raised an eyebrow, I was like, hmm, I don't know if that would, would be something we would use here in Catati. And after looking at it further, we decided the red cedar is a much better option, it's a sustainable wood, it's not, not threatened in any way, and it's cheaper, so that'll work better for us. May 9th is Bike to Work, I know that's been brought up before, but I'm putting that out there, that we will have our station again over at the train station, we'll have our Bike to Work station. And then also, something that you may not have heard much about, but the city is cooperating with pretty much all the towns and jurisdictions up and down the Smart Line, even in Marin County, and we're, we've kind of come together, it's being directed by SCTA and the Marin Transportation Authority, or Transportation Authority of Marin Pam. And it's, there's a grant from the MTC for $850,000 to do a bike share program all along the stations, served by the Smart Train, so Catati's part of that. And that, it started out with a feasibility study in 2016, and then early this last year, man, last year, 2018, we put out a request for information, and just to get, find out what kind of information people had on bike share programs. And now, based on that- And now, based on that, kind of what we got back, we've now put out an RFP, should say, SCTA put out an RFP, and, and those applications are going to be due March 29. And let me correct something, the grant awarded by MTC was 826,000, so. And that will be a kind of an initial, kind of three-year operating phase, I think, just to see how it works. There's, you know, there's, there's a little bit of concern that there just may not be enough ridership. There's also a need to get, try to get sponsorships and, and just make sure that it's funded viably.
Is there a date for completion of those new segments in, up to Santa Rosa and, I believe there is...
You mean as, for the Smart Trail?
Yes.
Yeah. I don't have dates, but I can say, and I just saw that they, I'm afraid to speak without being really versed, but I saw that there, there was some money put aside or grants that will be delivered to them to help them complete the large sections, large...
So there was a, there was a Rona Park up to Santa Rosa grant?
Mm-hmm.
And then there was also, I think, from Pengrove down to Petaluma, but there seems like there's a missing...
I think it's Pengrove to Rona Park.
Is it Pengrove to Rona Park?
Yeah, yeah. That section between Pengrove and Petaluma is, is one of the tougher nuts to crack, lot of wetlands that, that, that goes through. I can get an update, though. I can find out, because I think things have changed, especially in the last couple of months.
Well, in your position, yes, as SCTA Bicycle Pedestrian Committee Chairman...
It's my old position, but we don't do, we don't really involve with the Smart, Smart Trail.
But it should be possible to...
But I can certainly get an update on it. And, you know, if you're interested, you can go to their website. I just don't know how current it is, but they do post, this is a Smart website, they do post a PDF of the bike sales, of the bike path sections and their completion dates and their anticipated completion dates. It's just whether or not it's up to speed or not, up to date or not, I don't know, but I can call someone over at...
Because that would seem to really fit with the, the bicycle grant, if there's a bike share grant that can go up and down...
Absolutely.
...that path.
And that's all I have to report out on, so if you have any other questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
Yeah, Damon called me about the design review. We spoke about it. Do I understand that the design review people will, that group will be disbanded now and you will go to specialists? And if so, do we have some sort of mechanism to meet and greet or thank the design review committee for their efforts?
Yeah, they are council member appointees, so Lauren and Damian are putting together something for, for the members' appreciation. Yeah, that group will be disbanded. There are a couple that are design experts that have been on there that we'll probably talk to, that, you know, that's their specialty is architecture, as opposed to, you know, being a layperson. So, yeah, so they'll be disbanded, and we'll be trying to develop a small list of more design experts that we'll consult with under, probably under contract, to, to do the design administrative function. And it will probably end up involving them much earlier in the process. I think, I think it's going to work out better for everybody, really, for the applicants especially, who often, well, they have to go through a lot of different meetings with the way the design review process was set up. And they, they also had to do a lot of front-end work on their projects without really any guarantee that it would be accepted by the Design Review Committee or Planning Commission. And it's hard at that point to, to make any substantive changes when it's already really right in front of the committee, and it's like, just want to see a few things changed, but you don't want to, you know, affect the entire project in any way. So this way, we'll be able to get some of those design changes, I think, earlier in the process with using the experts that we would have had on Design Review Committee. Just think it's going to be a smoother process for everybody.
Yeah, I, I went to the council meeting where that was being discussed, and Mayor John Deloso specifically asked about your point, and said he wanted letters to thank everybody, the volunteers who'd been on the committee, to thank them for their work.
My concern is, my only concern at this would be the cost, because obviously, these specialists aren't going to review this for free.
I think what you'll find is that the cost for, we're not going to hire a specialist in every time, so what you're going to find is, like, the more complicated projects, yes, it will go to a specialist, and they'll have to pay for that. But what many applicants are going to have to do is have to go to a separate public hearing, and that costs money, too, because every one of those is noticed, and that costs several hundred dollars to the applicant just to, just to send out the notices and, and then post it in the newspaper is, you know, close to $500 endeavor. Plus, you're paying staff to write up all of that, you know, staff report just for the design review meeting. So I think for, what you're going to find is that there's a savings, a really much appreciated savings for the smaller projects, to have to avoid going through that process. And the larger projects, well, you know, yeah, they're going to have to, they're going to have to pay a person, but they would have been paying to go through that process anyway, so.
Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Any reports by the commission?
No.
Nope, none for me. Well, then, at 7:35, I close the commission hearing, and good luck to the new music.